I see it as of the hour. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newton Area Planning Commission. The first item on tonight's agenda is to consider approval of the June 5th, 2023 meeting minutes. Did everyone have an opportunity to review them? And if so, I would entertain a motion either for their approval or for their correction. Here's a motion to approve.
Second.
And the second. Any discussion in regard to the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item two on tonight's agenda is consider a final plat, Clausen second edition. Justin, you have that?
Yes. The property is locate, or the property on the plat is listed as, and you can see attachment D for that. As per the city subdivision regulations, a final plat was submitted to the appropriate city staff and area utility companies for review, along with the request that they forward proposed changes and comments. Those changes and comments were communicated to PEC, who will provide an updated version of the revised final plat incorporating those requests and comments. Staff continues to work with the applicant on a few items noted under recommended action. The final plat now comes before the Newton Area Planning Commission for consideration. If the planning commission is satisfied that the requirements of the applicable subdivision regulations have been or will be met by the developer, you may approve the, it says preliminary, but it should say final. And in your motion, I'd ask that you allow us to change that, including any required and requested changes. Attachments are as follows, A, B, C, and D. It is recommended that the Newton Area Planning Commission approve the final plat for Clausen second edition to City of Newton, Harvey County, Kansas contingent upon engineering staff receiving and adding of 24-304 comments for final plat and 24-305 required certificate comments as stated in the report.
Are there any questions for staff in regard to the, to the application for a final plat? Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Any comments from the applicant in regard to the final plat? Please identify yourself.
I'm Samantha Workins, civil engineer with PEC. I don't have any comments on the plat, but we all concur with the statements that are made by the, by the city and the recommendations.
Excellent. Are there any questions for Samantha in regard to the application? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we bring it back to the bench? Seeing no questions, I would open it up for a motion from the bench in regard to the final plat.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second. Okay. Would that motion include the two remarks, 24-304 and 24-305, that the, that the engineering department would like to have answered?
It would.
Include that in part of the motion? I thought that's what you guys meant.
I would also like to make note that where it said preliminary plat, that we were allowed to change it to say final in the motion as well.
Oh, part of the motion?
Yes.
Part of the second?
Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion. Did you have something to say?
I just have one question to ask once you get to that. Sorry.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion and a second. Do you have a question before we vote?
Yeah. The only thing was, so you brought it up about what's behind the Dillon stores. Do we need to put anything in the motion to help get that cleaned up? Or I know it's kind of a separate deal, but...
I think we can handle that outside of this issue.
That's what I figured, but I just wanted to ask.
And if you don't mind, I'll just make comment on that, that we have wrapped up construction documents for the owner, and he is going to remove the majority of those trees and stuff behind this door. That's part of our plans. So they'll go out in the bid documents in a couple of weeks.
Excellent. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before I call the question? Hearing none, I'll call the question in regard to the final plat. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item three on tonight's agenda is a continuation for the request for a special use permit at 908 Trinity Drive. An application for an ADU, auxiliary dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit.
Correct. Justin? Yes, like you had mentioned, this is just a continuation from the June 5th Planning Commission meeting, where you guys asked us to bring back comparisons for surrounding communities. We've reached out to a few, and those that have responded back or communicated with us, I've put into a spreadsheet that's in front of you. And if you have any questions from that, instead of me reading each standard from each community, I would just give you time to review that, and if you have questions or comments, I can try to answer those.
I do have a question. As far as it says complaints, I mean, how do we know if that's, that they're not mowing their yard? Or if that's the dogs barking, whether the complaints registered against these dwellings?
And they didn't really go into details on that. So...
Okay. Other comments?
Well, just that, you know...
Or questions, I mean. On additions, I mean.
And to go on that comment, an accessory dwelling unit is already on the existing property. So for them not to be mowing, that would be the primary resident that wouldn't be mowing that. So that would be an environmental that we would hit that with. So...
Did you just say that, I'm sorry, did you just say that the unit is already there? Are they using it as a dwelling?
It is, it is not, but that's what they're requesting to turn it into an accessory.
That's, that's what I understood the application with. It was a shed, but go ahead.
Yep.
Just that I, I think number eight on the Sedgwick County one is, is an interesting twist that I hadn't actually thought of before. And that is to make sure that you can't sell it as a separate unit. What, what would be in our rules and regs to not allow that at this moment?
I don't believe we have anything.
Yeah.
I mean, ours are stated right here that you can't really have, what would be difficult about that in our regs. We cannot have an accessory structure without a primary structure. So, I mean, they would have to do a lot split unless you were to create...
So they have to...
Selling that off, and then usually on these, we have our minimum standards of like 6,000 square feet minimum property size. A lot of these are not 12,000, so they wouldn't be able to split that off to have a separate dwelling unit. I mean, we have things here and there throughout our code that I'm sure we could...
Access.
Access to not allow.
Access would be an issue.
Yes.
And did we say that if you were to sell the primary home, whoever purchases it would have to go through the permit process again?
No.
It doesn't, it's not inherited when we sell the property.
Well, that's...
It's an annual...
That would, an annual thing in a question. I mean, that's something that we could put within the motion, that it would not, or it could. I mean, that's...
Okay. I thought, I thought we talked about this a little bit, that if the primary residence gets sold, whoever buys it doesn't just inherit, they inherit the structure, but not the use permit. It'd have to be reapplied for.
If you put that in the motion, that's how it would work.
Okay.
Because you're approving... A special, especially, sorry, a special use permit. And so you can add things as requirements to that.
Does the special use follow the property or the property owner?
It's the use, right?
Right.
It's a use on that property.
Mm-hmm. By, by the owner.
The property. Well...
It, it's a gray area. That's why you're safer to put it in your motion on how you'd like to see these, I mean, in way or the other.
Mm-hmm.
So, I understand in this particular case that that lot's too small, but when we're, when we're setting a precedence...
Correct.
So, let's say somebody does have an acre lot and builds a, a small piece off the back and, and gives an easement for a driveway back to it. I, I mean, I, I've thought about this a lot, just FYI, and of course, there's, you can't think of everything. And so when I read number eight here, I'm going, wait a minute, I didn't even think about that, that, that's a possibility of getting it sold off, you know? And what would, what would prevent that? So, does that, is, is that something we need to talk about for a special use permits or for ADUs in the future in, in our rules and regs?
Correct.
So we need to make sure that we're writing some of these things down so we can come back and revisit them, you know, at some point in time.
I think the thing that's gonna be, it's gonna catch you up on, this is a unique one. But the, the access and the frontage is what's gonna trip almost every one of these, not to be able to be sold off. Because you have to have access to get to the structure. And you have to have a certain amount of frontage to be able to do that. And you could say, well Suzanne, 12th Street's right there. They could do it, except for the fact, 12th Street, they're not allowed to access 12th Street via the plat because there's access control on there. And so in this case, it may look like they could have access, but I'm not sure they would have enough access, and they wouldn't have enough frontage to be able to do it.
Correct.
Now, there might be a scenario out there, which I'm really glad to hear you say that, Harlan. How do we think of everything? That's why we always are trying to add all these things, and people think we're being crazy. But we are trying to make sure that we're not boxing ourselves in, in case there was a scenario that we didn't want to allow it. And so the way to prevent that, if you have some concerns about specific items, you could say, hey, in this SUP, here's the requirements for you to receive this special use permit. And you could say that it's good for four years. It's good for a year. You have to come back every year. And if things come up and there's new things that are surfaced, then those could be added in the next round. Correct?
Another, just quick question. Is there, is there a difference, or is it just semantics, between the difference between a conditional use permit and a special use permit?
They're basically, they're the same.
So it's just semantics?
Semantics, yep. Yeah, when I was talking to Sedgwick, they, they said it sounds like our, you guys have an SUP and we have the...
Okay.
They can do the same thing with their SUP. They can do, add just like we can on an SUP.
Okay.
The other thing that I don't know if we talked about a lot here, we mentioned last time, and we talked about as staff, and just having the discussion here reminds me about this, is you could say, this is a special use permit and it needs to be, a special use permit in itself typically would need to be reviewed every year, but that could be reviewed administratively so that you all don't have to take your time with that every year, unless there are problems. And you could say, if there are a bunch of complaints about this, then it would need to come back before this body. And so you could have that be one of the criteria for the SUP.
Correct.
Which then allows the individuals that are requesting the SUP to know they're gonna be able to operate and put a little bit of money into this improvement. But they also know, hey, we're gonna be able to have this for a period of time. And it is a motivator to, to make sure that keep neighbors happy.
I mean, I thought there were a lot of interesting things in Hutchison's. I thought that that was really good, that they had to be connected to water and sewer and had to have a kitchen. The drawing provided doesn't look like it has a kitchen. Oh, is this, are you the, oh, excellent.
I don't know.
If you, yeah, if you would come up, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and again, just introduce yourself. I'm sorry I wasn't at the last meeting, but please introduce yourself.
Yeah. It was already our intention to build a little mini kitchen.
Okay.
So it'll have a fridge, a mini fridge, and a sink, and even like a little hot stove.
Yep.
It was even, it's in the parameters of a living space that would be required.
Sure.
In fact, as you already know, we plan on renting this out as an Airbnb. And Airbnb's guidelines are also that it needs a little mini kitchen.
Sure. Can you state your name and address, please? Yeah, just for the record again, you probably did it last time.
Dorian Funk, 908 Trinity Drive, Newton.
Thank you. Thanks, Dorian. And another question while you're right, right here, was it talked about off-street parking is some of that. Are you, you have room in your driveway for a second car or what? I mean, I'm just trying to, as we look at how this works, I want to make sure that we're, you know, dealing with that.
Yeah. No, we, we certainly do. We have, as you can see on the picture, it's a big yard, for one. We have multiple options, if I can walk over here.
Certainly.
You could either park along the street, or even have plenty of room here. We can park inside our own property.
If street parking is an issue, right? If suddenly the neighbors say, you guys are taking up too much of the street. But I don't actually see that being a problem, because we're gonna have a max occupancy above four people. So, one, that's probably like one vehicle, two vehicles max.
Are you okay with that restriction of four people?
We would be, with the exception of maybe two adults and three children. I haven't thought that far yet. But that is kind of what we were thinking was two, two, two parents, two children, or four adults, or, yeah, four. And we'd probably be okay with that.
Other questions for the applicant while he's up here? If something else comes up, I may ask you to come up.
Yep.
Okay, Dorian, thank you very much. Yeah, and I think also as we look at ADUs, we, we wouldn't want somebody with a, a big property to decide, maybe I could fit five in the backyard, right? Or, I mean, right, so...
But there's nothing in the regs that would prevent that.
No, I'm just, as we are having this discussion, or maybe it would be appropriate.
It is in our regs. Number one in our regs only allows one ADU.
Okay, well, thanks.
Per property.
Per property.
Per property. Okay. Excellent.
Right there, number one. I should have written down there. Okay, other questions for staff? Dorian, just one quick question. You can probably answer it from there. If we were to look at giving you this for two or three years, you think that's something that's reasonable, that, that could be approved now and then reviewed administratively a period of time?
Absolutely.
Okay. In case, again, police calls, wild parties, all the things that neighbors complain about.
Yeah, we would complain about that, too.
Don't, doesn't the city have to renew this yearly?
It doesn't.
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
It's all new. Okay. This is all new, first.
It's up to you.
One in front of us, like has been mentioned, there are others out there. They're just not been enforced and put in front of you.
They may, the city may decide to do it yearly. I mean, or at least do a permit yearly. I don't know about if they have the authority to shut somebody down. But, I mean, they could, they could decide to charge a fee per year to, to renew their license.
Just nothing on the books currently.
Yeah.
I'd also add one more comment, that when I talked to the fire marshal, he would request that you give us the authority to make another separate address for them. So it wouldn't be based on their primary. That way, if they do have any issue and within the ADU that the fire department or police understand where they need to go, that would be an alternative that you put in the motion, please.
And they'll have to have it visible from the street, the address.
Does that mean curb? Does that mean, since this is in the backyard, how would it be accessible from the street? But a sign in the front yard or on the curb or...
I mean, they're likely going to have some kind of walk-in...
Sure.
Through the fence access, and it would have that at that location. I wouldn't think they're having them walk through their house. It's probably gonna be to the side.
Okay. Other questions or comments before I ask for a motion? There was not a tabled motion. It was just continued to this meeting. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. That's the way I read the minutes, but I missed something earlier already, so... So what would be the will of the commission?
Well, can I ask, would we be willing to grant this if, I'm trying to take notes of what everybody's saying here, so that we have a separate ad, am I off?
Yeah, there you go.
We have a separate address for the unit that's visible from the street, per Justin's indication from the fire department. Two years with administrative review after two years, four people max. If the home is sold, the SUP needs to be reapplied for. We're not going to inherit the SUP. And we cannot sell the ADU separate from the home. Can we live with that?
And if there's complaints, then it comes back to us.
It'll be part of the administrative reviews.
After, after two years.
Two-year review.
Did you get all that? Cause I didn't.
You want to make that in a form of a motion, and then we can see if we get a second?
If complaints go to... Now, if I can read my own writing. I can. We all seem agreeable. I will make a motion that we approve this SUP based upon a separate address for the unit visible from the street, a two-year review of the SUP administratively, unless there are complaints, then it will need to come back to the zoning. Four people max in the structure. If the primary home is sold, the SUP needs to be reapplied for. There's no inheriting of the SUP by new owners, and no selling of the ADU separately from the home.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Can I, Jay's got a second?
I would want, he, to be fair to him, he also mentioned two adults or three children. I don't want him to get in trouble if they bring three children. Ours say four people max.
He said he would live with the four people, but if we...
He can live with four.
Okay.
I agree. Yes, yes, yes.
Can I, can I make a request that we do these per calendar year? Cause if we start getting a bunch of these and they're randomly spread throughout the year, that is a...
Good point.
Staff nightmare for us to remember which ones are in front of us and not. I'd rather deal with them January 1 through whatever, or whatever you guys would put in there, but...
amend the motion for two-year review upon calendar year.
So what if we, what if you were to say this would expire...
Yeah, January 1 of...
December 31 of...
2025.
2025.
That, that would be great. Helpful for me.
A year and, I'd give you a year and a half on the first, first throw. Decide if you're sick of it or not.
Thank you.
2025.
What'd you say, December 31, 2025?
You're okay with that? Are you okay with that amendment to that? Commission good with the amendment of them? Okay. Unless somebody wants to have a vote on that amendment, we'll just have that go. Comments in regard to the motion, in favor or against? Okay. Seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor of the motion, which is to allow this SUP with a separate address, visible from the street, review administratively, unless there are complaints up to and including December 31, 2025, and no selling of the ADU separately as part of the property. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Congratulations, Dorian. Good luck in your endeavor.
Thanks, Dorian.
Item four on tonight's agenda is to review the zoning regulations, Article 9. That came to you as information only. So, please take a look at that. Any questions about that that was in the packet? Seeing no questions about that, were there ideas in regard to Article 8 that brought up as old business? Any concerns about Article 8 from last month?
I, I just had one question. On the second page, under site, site development plan required, are the drainage and utility requirements, are those a separate deal to this? Or like, is that part of the plating or...
It's part of the plating requirement.
Okay, so that's why it's not listed under specific items.
Right. It's, they come with the preliminary plat, and then drainage, of course, is covered there and as an additional item.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered that.
I mean, when we review, we might add it back, I mean, so that we're, make sure we're covered, but currently we are covered.
Okay, yeah.
So you don't think there's a need to add it?
Those site plans that we've worked on, we usually require those, or we have to do them.
And if you don't, we make sure that Suzanne gets it covered.
Right, yeah. Yeah. So it's, as long as you think we're covered.
Well, if you, if you think it needs to be added, you might look at that.
We can put it in as a comment to come back as a whole to the group.
So, just make sure I'm getting this straight, though. So, you know, like, water and drainage and all of that, that, that does not necessarily have to be done, even at the time of the preliminary plat. That, that's a, that's a final plat issue, not a preliminary plat issue. Cause on a preliminary plat, they may not even decide at that point in time how big a building to build. So...
Yeah, they would. Well, the building...
They may not know.
The building we wouldn't know about, but where the public improvements are gonna go, that's typically shown with the preliminary plat. We receive that with a preliminary plat.
Yeah, but this is, so this is, this is one of the complaints that I've heard, just through the years, from, from engineering firms for Newton, is that up here, it is, for some reason, it seems like it is required for a preliminary plat period. And many times at that point in time, they haven't fully decided how big a building they're gonna build. And so depending on how big a building they're gonna build is gonna change how much lot space is available, which means now you've got increased runoff. And so they have to go back, the complaint is, is that it seems like they come one time, and then the, then the developer kind of changes their mind, and then they gotta re-figure all of that again, when that's really not a necessary time until the final plat. It's really, preliminary plat time doesn't really matter whether that's finalized or not for things like runoff. But for some reason, it seems like here, that's the complaint that I hear, is that we have to do that. So we ended up having to do it three times because they kept changing the size of the building, or they kept changing the site plans.
I think there's, I think there's some things getting confused in, in that statement, because I think it's pretty typical that a community does require a drainage plan with your plat. And the preliminary plat and the final plat typically are coming together. Some type of a rough draft of a drainage plan comes with the preliminary plat. And we, we, I don't know that we've ever denied one. We have one, and there's a whole lot of extenuating circumstances coming with a preliminary plat, subject to a drainage plan coming, and...
I'm just telling you what I have heard. I, I've heard that it is different here in that regard for engineering firms. So I, I don't know whether that's right, whether that's wrong. I'm just telling you that...
Yeah.
And we're, sorry, working on preliminary plats, usually we have to submit the utility plan, drainage plan, everything with the preliminary plat for reviews. Cause usually the...
The easements, yeah.
Yeah.
None of the drainage.
The easements, I get, yeah.
But, but I, I hope you're not, because a property could be platted with several lot dimensions and stuff like that, and then somebody goes to put a building on it, then a new drainage plan needs to be developed specific to that lot, and, and whether it's two lots or whatever.
It's a site plan.
So then the site plan has to meet the city's...
I, I don't know. I just, I just know, it wasn't, it wasn't that it was like a, it was more of, you know, they're gonna come, somebody's gonna build one, one building on one particular area. There was a lot of going back and forth, because the developer ended up changing how size the building was, which changes everything else. And so the complaint was, is that up here, it's, it's kind of a requirement to have it all done ahead of time, when in other communities, it's really not till final plat time. So I guess I just, you're on, you are an engineer, so...
Yeah. I think he's talking more site, well, you're too.
Yeah, I am an engineer, too. Yeah. I still think there's just some confusion in the discussion, because the, the site plan doesn't get submitted until they get ready to pull a building permit. And so how big the building, you guys have talked about this before. When you bring a plat forward, it doesn't matter what buildings are going on it. You're looking at zoning, and you're looking at how the plat lays out, how utilities are gonna work, how it fits with all of our subdivision regulations. And where a building goes, all the time, we may have a plat come forward with no building layout yet. That happens when they get ready to pull a building permit. The only thing I could think that could be happening here is, this is a really, really, really old comment from years ago, before anybody ever started requiring drainage permits, which, or drainage plans, which is, I don't know, 30 years ago, or before stormwater drainage requirements came into place, which we're looking at like now 20 years ago. That started being an issue, because there is an issue with stormwater quantity and stormwater quality. And 20 years ago, you didn't have to worry about the quality that we do now, which those plans maybe didn't have to be submitted before you had an actual building permit. But now, there's requirements for not just when there is construction that occurs, but also post-construction BMP. So there's, you know, thank you, federal government.
I'll be the first to admit that I don't understand the whole process. I'm just trying to relay something that, that somebody's trying to tell me that is different here, and maybe I misunderstood what was different here compared to other.
And I can tell you, working around, all around this area, the requirements here aren't much different than Valley Center
or Mays or anyplace else like that.
And we're a part of a stormwater consortium with 21 other cities around the state, and we meet quarterly. And our requirements are pretty near the same as everybody else's. You know, there's always some little tweak for your community, but pretty typical. Pretty typical.
Okay. Any other comments in regard to Article 8? Any other old business from staff? Operate anything?
I would add one, I talked to, this is a question from our last meeting, and I talked to our legal staff, the development survey will only come back if the mayor, the CDC elect to do so. It's recommended that you work with them if you have questions or comments.
Suzanne, do you have any other old business?
No, sir.
Any of the commissioners have old business? Any old business? Okay. Seeing any, is there any new business?
You don't have anything?
I guess we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks for putting this ADU stuff together.
Justin did all this. This was good tonight, this was, this was meaty stuff for, first step in all of this.
They're, they're a lot more popular, they're one way to a dr...